As we all know, Ms. Hawley's mother passed this week. And therefore, I am replacing her as chair today. Please keep the family in prayer, those of us that have lost a loved one, especially a mom. You know, we know what that feels like. We know what that individual family is going through. And so, I ask you to keep the family in prayer during their time of bereavement. Also, I wanted to have a moment of silence for our student at Alapathe Flat and her family, the Rodriguez Gonzalez family, as well as our Alapathe Flat family. Again, when you lose a child, it's very tragic. And some of us have experienced that and understand the pain that those that are left behind are going through. So, we want to have a moment of prayer, a moment of silence before we turn the rest of our meeting over to Superintendent Jen. Mr. Jen.
Want to do a pledge?
Oh, okay. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and for all.
Okay, Mr. Jen.
Okay, good morning, board members. And today, we're going to have a presentation on capital projects planning report. And one of the things that we're going to begin today and we want to share with the board is the need for a new high school in the Tradition area, as well as laying out some beginning conversations with rebuilding Westwood High School, which will be part of the presentation today. So, I'm going to ask Mr. O'Leary will be presenting, Marty's going to be presenting, John Gillette's going to be presenting. We don't want to make John Gillette mad because he's only got two and a half weeks left and he can turn around and walk out the door at any point. And Michelle will also have a part of it. So, we've got a different group today that normally, that we don't normally hear from. So, Mr. O'Leary.
Good morning, Chair, board members, Mr. Jen, and staff. I would also like to recognize some of our senior project managers, Brian Locatelli and Matthew Weather, who have been instrumental in providing a lot of the work as well. So, if they can just stand or raise their hand, just so they can be recognized for the presentation. Thanks, guys. So, today, I'm, we, as you know, we have several people that are going to be talking to you about overall capital planning report. What I'm going to talk to you about is the guiding principles of how we develop that report and have an understanding that this report is not just about facilities. This report also encompasses, in that capital outlay report that you have before you, our bus transportation, our IT, our safety, all of that is encompassed in the plan that is before you. So, if we look, let me just catch up here. Since 1977, according to state statute, we've been required to submit a five-year project work plan, statute 235, for us to review every year. We send it into the DOE. We leverage several documents to help us develop this report. And we also leverage several departments to put all the needs that the school district puts together. So, it's a systemic report. It is also a fluid report, meaning that it's based upon our funding and those types of things that we are constantly moving projects if need be. So, it is definitely fluid. How do we go about developing this report? And you can see the operational planning process that we put together. We meet four times a year, more if needed, but quarterly, to review the following things. Top left, you'll see there is our review of demographic report. And Marty does a phenomenal job. It talks about our enrollment trends, our site capacities, do we have enough seats available for the amount of students we have. To the right is our facility needs assessments, are our facilities, maintenance, all of those things in line, and what type of projects we need to move those facilities forward. The other guiding principle is obviously the most important, and that's our CFO, Michelle Thomas. What funds will we leverage to assign to the projects? Projects don't happen unless we have the funds behind them and we align our funds to those projects, not just through the five years, but we develop that all the way out with our studies. So, it could be 10, 15 years as we go forward. And to the right, the most important is our program funds, our educational program, programs that we have at our school, are they changing? So, we work with our CIO, Dr. Wild, to make sure that if we have some program needs, that we're modifying our facilities to meet their needs. So, you, as you can see, it's a very holistic or systemic approach to make sure we have that planning in place over that five-year scope. So, with this said, I'm going to bring up Marty, and he'll talk to you about community and school planning at this time.
First, I want to talk a little bit about the historical growth in St. Lucie County. You know, we always look backwards to see what's going to happen forwards. Looking at the last five and 10-year periods, in North Fort Pierce, we've had about 2,600 new building permits or new developed certificates of occupancy in North Fort Pierce. And in Eastport-St. Lucie, that's area east of the Turnpike, about 3,000 new residential units. And then, in Southwest Port-St. Lucie, almost 11,000 new dwelling units. So, you can see that roughly two-thirds of all the county growth has been in Southwest Port-St. Lucie, the area east, west of the Turnpike and south of Midway Road. Looking at, you know, what our growth potential is, we're, first, we look at what the vacant residential inventory is, what's available for a builder to go in and pull a building permit and build a new product. So, these are the projects that have been out there for quite some time, you know, in Fort Pierce, Bent Creek, Celebration Point, Neil's Farm, Carriage Point, Creekside, those have been in the works for about, many of them for about 10 years. The newer ones coming in, up on the north end, Sunnyland Farms, Draudy Residential, and Eagle Bend, which is just to the west of Fort Pierce-Westwood. So, with that being said, there's about 9,300 dwelling units that could be built in Fort Pierce today, and there might be a little bit more than that, you know, vacant lots floating around. But on the large developments, there's somewhere around 9,300 units could be built. If you look at Southeast Port-St. Lucie, again, that's the old GDC areas, you know, around, again, east of the Turnpike, the Prima Vista area, you know, Port-St. Lucie High School area, there's about 6,700 dwelling units that could be built on those vacant lots in Port-St. Lucie. There might be a little bit more in some of the unincorporated county area, but the things that have actually could move forward at a rather rapid pace is about 6,700 units. In Southwest Port-St. Lucie, again, the old GDC areas, you can see the Torino, the St. Lucie West, Port-St. Lucie Planning Areas, Four North and Four South, that's been, where about half of the southwest Port-St. Lucie growth has been both the Torino area and then the Four North and Four South, which we call that the 34953 ZIP code. You know, that's been a big grower for some time. And then, the new developments of regional impact are DRIs out, you know, in Tradition, Western Grove, Southern Grove, Wilson Grove, and then LTC Ranch, those are all coming onboard. Copper Creek's almost built out, about 175 units left there. So, you can see that, again, that southwest area has been growing. And then, the new items coming on, Colter just purchased the old Stark Ranch, our EMS Ranch, and they're looking at about almost 10,000 dwelling units. So, they're going to call that the Oak Ridge Ranch, the new PUD that's been filed with the county. So, with, there's almost 58,000 dwelling units that could be built on, in Southwest Port-St. Lucie. So, you can see the potential for growth is much greater in Southwest Port-St. Lucie. You know, the residential market has been strong in the past few years. The home sales are near the peak of the pre-recession boom. Most of the major builders are here, low interest rates, COVID, where people are moving from other states, have really fueled Port-St. Lucie growth. The thing that has limited is the supply chain issues, building supplies, labor shortages. If it hadn't been for that, we would have had faster growth because all of the builders are basically opening up product and they're closed within a day or two. Everybody takes a lottery to get in on the home purchases. So, there's much greater demand than there is supply in the residential market. You saw the article in yesterday's paper showed a little bit of that, that they asked if the home sales were cooling. It's not cooling, there's just a lack of inventory is why there's been less movement. One of the ways that we project future growth is using the University of Florida Bureau of Economic and Business Research, or BIBR, estimates. BIBR produces a low, medium, and high estimate. I listed the low and medium, I'm sorry, the medium and high estimate there through 2045. We elected to go with a medium estimate because if you look, they're talking about through 2025, almost 3,000 dwelling units a year, and we really haven't seen that. And the high rates, 5,000 dwelling units, and we've only had one year in the last 20 years that we've had 5,000 dwelling units constructed. So, we move forward looking at the BIBR medium rates. So, this is, I broke it out in both a K-8 and a high school estimate. You can see in 2030, we're looking at a growth of about 5,600 K-8 students with a enrollment of almost 29,000 students. And then, in the high school, a growth of about 2,300 students. So, the next nine years, that's the growth we're looking at. You know, I did carry it out all the way through 2045 to see what happens, you know, as we move forward. So, how and will, how and where will we grow? You know, we believe that the growth will be similar in the same three regions. I showed you through the vacant inventory of what's available to grow on. Port-St. Lucie growth will think, we think will be the same as we've seen over the last 10 years, maybe a little higher, that's what the BIBR numbers show. Northern St. Lucie County will grow at a higher rate that we've seen in the last five years. And then, age-restricted housing will be limited to primarily in Southwest Port-St. Lucie. That's where we've seen it, the large developments, that builders are creating these lifestyle communities of over 55 with no children. So, we believe that that will happen. And we've made adjustments in our projections with the anticipated age-restricted housing. You can see the red areas are the age-restricted housing that we have predominantly in Port-St. Lucie. There's a couple of them in North Fort Pierce, but not, north of Midway Road, but not many. You can see over on US1, there's Spanish Lakes, the King's Isle in St. Lucie West. And then, where we've really grown in age-restricted housing has been in the southwest area. You know, Verano's got age-restricted housing. Tradition has, almost 50% of the units in Tradition are age-restricted housing, believe it or not. And then, Southwest Port-St. Lucie, I mean, Southern Grove, there's some age-restricted housing in there. And all of the housing in Riverland has been age-restricted to date. We really, from what we're talking to the builders, we anticipate a lot more of that's going to be age-restricted. So, the good news is, we don't have to provide schools for those homes, but they provide, you know, ad valorem tax revenue for us. So, the estimated growth we see through 2030, we believe that, again, proportion this out based upon the BIBR estimates and then the potential growth. In North St. Lucie County and Southeast Port-St. Lucie, we take up pretty much all of the available units, are very close to it. And then, in Southwest Port-St. Lucie, you see that we anticipate growing by almost 18,000 dwelling units. Again, those, because of the age-restricted housing in Southwest Port-St. Lucie, all of those do not have students. Talk a little bit about full-time equivalent enrollment and what we call capital outlay, full-time enrollment. Capital outlay is basically the students that are enrolled in one of our brick-and-mortar buildings. So, if it's, if it's, the difference between capital outlay and FTE is the DJJ, the jail, charter schools, the variety of empowerment scholarships. You can see through about 2008, 2009, the FTE and capital outlay FTE were basically the, nearly the same line. And then, we started getting a deviation from that. That's the growth in charter schools have, has caused those two lines to deviate. And if I superimpose the values of the charter school enrollment on the capital outlay FTE, you can see the green line shows you where the total enrollment is with the charter schools, which shows that makes up the most of the differential between the deviation between FTE and capital outlay FTE. So, talk a little bit about school planning and community needs. You know, a lot of it is about matching, historically, school planning has been matching student enrollment and student seats, so you have enough seats to fit the butts. So, basically, the home construct, we're looking at something a little bit different here because the home construction in Southwest Port-St. Lucie is causing student growth, and we don't have any schools in that area. You know, the five and 10-year projections show that we have enough capacity district-wide to handle the K-8 schools, but not the high schools. And the community desires schools closer to proximity to their homes. We have options to build schools to capture students and provide a higher level of service for those students. I think I hit the wrong button, sorry. This shows the locations of our K-8 and elementary schools in St. Lucie County. You can see that we have most of the county covered except Southwest Port-St. Lucie. The shaded circle there is Palm Point, where we have a different type enrollment versus general student enrollment with our choice system. You know, it's FAU, FAU process. And this is the location that we have for schools to be built in Southwest Port-St. Lucie through developers agreements with the developments of regional impact. We have had those in place. Same thing for the high schools. You can see, this is the locations of our high school, the red shaded circle is LPA because, again, it's a magnet school with slightly different enrollment. And then, you can see the locations of the high schools that we have planned locations with the developments of regional impact for that area as well. If we look at the K-8 growth through 2030, you'll see in the North County, we have available capacity, there's 2,700 seats more than we have in enrollment anticipated. In Eastport-St. Lucie, we have about 1,800 students, seats available more than we have students. And then, in Southwest Port-St. Lucie, we have a deficit of about 558 seats. So, overall, we have the capacity for the K-8 needs, but they're not in, totally in the right area based upon the growth. Want to recognize too, that 70% of all of our student growth is in K-8s. So, it's really important that we capture those students as well. So, if we look at the high schools, with the anticipated student growth through 2030, we show a deficit of about 163 seats in North Fort Pierce schools. And you can start to see that, you know, both Central and Westwood are nearing capacity. Eastport-St. Lucie, we still have a surplus of seats. And then, in Southwest Port-St. Lucie, we have a deficit of about 1,200 seats. Overall, you see that we have about 1,100 seats deficit in 2030. So, we put together a plan to both match the capacity and enhance service. That plan is to look at, modernize Fort Pierce-Westwood. We have to perform an analysis as required by the Department of Education to determine whether we can just modernize the building as it stands or whether we should replace it. We have to take the lowest cost, and I'm confident when we do that, we're going to find the lowest cost. And meeting the program needs is going to be rebuilding Westwood because Westwood doesn't meet all the educational requirements. You know, just look at the windows in the classrooms. There's many classrooms that don't have windows. That's a violation of SREF. So, we'll look at that. We anticipate replacement with 2,000 student stations, expandable to 2,500. That would add about 200 capacity to the existing school to meet the North County growth. And the K-8s, we're looking at a new K-8, building that at 1,000 student stations, expandable, excuse me, that should be 1,600 student stations, expandable. In Southwest Port-St. Lucie, to meet the needs of that growth area. And then, last, a high school in Southwest Port-St. Lucie, building it at 1,500 student stations, expanding it to, expandable to 2,500. And then, we, so, putting that plan, you know, analyzing that plan, what it does for enrollment, you can see in the K-8s, we would actually have a surplus of seats. In Southwest Port-St. Lucie goes from being a negative to a positive of 442 surplus seats. And then, in the high schools, you can see that it's pretty well balanced. We'd have a surplus of about 37 seats in North Fort Pierce, 272 in East Port-St. Lucie, and 282 in Southwest Port-St. Lucie. So, with that, we would have the cost associated with that, about $82 million, we have estimated for Fort Pierce-Westwood, $79 million for the new high school, DDD, we'll call it. And then, the new K-8, next in line is FFA. That's about $43 million, so a total cost of about $204 million. The location of those school sites, we've been talking to the developers. We know the K-8 site in Southern Grove is ready today. We could move on that today. And the high school site we're looking at is the one on Crosstown Parkway and Verano. They're, the developers putting plans in place to extend Crosstown to meet our timing as well. So, we'll work on a developers agreement to recognize that, that timing, and have that commitment from the developer. And then, again, recap of that plan. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Thomas to come up and talk a little bit about how we will fund, fund the schools. Again, you see the cost is about $204 million.
Lots that you're talking about, those are platted lots, right? Those are platted for the whole county, right? And of course, most of those are down southwest.
Yeah, some of them are platted and some are things like, in the southwest, things like Southern Grove, where you have, you know, the property's entitled, the roads are in, and then, the developer can put a plat in and keep moving.
Just in the original annexations, it was 28,000 homes. That was 15 years ago. But we don't have a figure on vested lots, do we, like we used to have years ago?
Yeah, that was part of what I presented.
Did you have that in there?
Yeah, that's the vested lots. I didn't break them out separately. But if you look in the southeast Port-St. Lucie.
Oh, those are vested, those are GDC.
Those are pretty much the vested lots. And likewise, let me, if you'd like, I can back up to that.
Yeah, 80,000 of the 82,000 GDC lots were vested for years.
Yeah. Bear with me.
And just for the public, that means that they're owned privately owned, most of them, they're going to be built on.
Yeah, that was always our fear with 80,000 lots that were vested in Port-St. Lucie, is where are we going to put the kids? So, here's a good example. If you look at the planning area, Four North, you can see the total build-out was 22,000 dwelling units, and they've actually completed 17,000. So, the remaining vested lots in Four North is 5,180 dwelling units. Again, Four South, the same thing, you can see. So, those areas in what I'll call the old GDC is primarily the vested lots. Then, when you get out to the west, the Southern Grove, our Riverland, those are larger tracts that the developers going in and subdividing it and putting the roads in as well. So, those, those aren't as fast a turnover. You couldn't go pull a building permit on one of those vacant parcels today, but you could within the next, you know, 24 months probably.
That was the point I was trying to get from you. And also, the last question, you're talking about the site for the high school. At the end of Crosstown, Crosstown's going to go even further, but you're talking about that way? We had, when the Southwest annexations were done, we had them lay aside quite a bit of property for schools, and it was quite, it was down in the Anscoth area or.
Yeah.
Riverland area, but we're not going to use that?
Well, we have a school site in Riverland as well. So, let me flip to that one real quick. If you look at this map, you see all the way down by the C-23 canal by Becker, there's a school site all the way down at the south end of Riverland, that's the blue shaded area. But we have not been able to get a commitment out of Riverland that Becker will be done in the time for us to start a school site in the timeframe that we need. So, and again, I think one of the reasons that we thought that the Verano, we've had this Verano site since 2005, believe it or not. It's moved a couple times. It came to this board, I think, last September, or last November, it came to this board last year in November for moving the site. So, it was originally all the way over by Village. They've moved it to the west, which is actually a benefit to us because there's a road called North-South A that goes all the way from Becker all the way up to pass Glades Cut Off Road. So, it's going to be a great arterial street that it's near, that will give us good access both from Crosstown and that North-South A to feed this whole area.
Yeah, I would think that the property at the end of Becker, the Riverland piece, that would be, that it's fitted and better with the demographics. But we're in TPO right now talking about that road.
Yeah.
So, there's some, they've got to get together and decide who's going to pay before we can move forward.
Yeah, as you may well be aware, there's, lack of better terms, a big brouhaha with the extension of Becker, that the ankle are Wilson Groves and Riverland, Southern Groves, and the city has all been in mediation to try to figure out who's going to build the road. And certainly, we don't want to put our schedule in that basket of eggs. It's not a good way to start. That's one of the other reasons.
Yeah, we can call it a debacle.
Yeah.
But it's going to get done, you and I.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you because having this gentleman on our planning and zoning boards, he's right up to date, I can tell you that right now. Good job. Thank you.
So, with that, and I'll say, I've got a couple more things to talk about, Michelle.
Do you have any questions for you?
Sure.
Before you move. And Jack, Mr. Kelly, you did a great job with your questions, and we've got more clarifications based on your questions. Thank you. Any other board member would like to make any comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanders.
And I've got a couple more things here. And I've got a couple more things here.
Good morning. Of course, when we talk about building schools, everyone wants to know how are we going to pay for it? So, that's where I come in. So, we have several different borrowing tools that we utilize. One of them is our certificates of participation. Those are our lease purchase agreements, that most of our schools have been built using those borrowing tools. We also have sales tax and impact fee revenue. So, we're going to use a combination of the two in order to accomplish the building of these three schools. If you look, our new school, the first school, the high school, we expect to issue $58 million in debt and use 21 million in either sales tax or impact fees. And what we will do with that is we will use those sales tax and impact fees to dedicate to a specific building. That will help us reduce our cost per student station, which is great for our debt capacity. Westwood, we're estimating borrowing 61 million, and again, using sales tax and impact fees to offset with 21 million. And then the K8 issuing debt of 35 million, with 8 million coming from sales tax and impact fee revenues. Any questions?
I'm talking to the superintendent about this, and just the business numbers that I'm dealing with in today's market with a massive inflation, the cost is at 79 million, and sales tax and impact fees is at 21 million. How are we going to lobby the continued growth of impact fees to stay with the inflation rate?
I'm not sure I understand the question yet. I think Marty might come in for that.
So, one of the things that we do periodically, and we've got that on our game plan to do this year, is to update our impact fee study. So, we try to update the impact fee study, that we look at both the revenue and the cost side of what it costs to build a school. And again, we'll work with the Treasure Coast builders and the home building communities to go through that process and evaluate the impact fees. They've been increasing through a CPI adjustment every year.
Okay.
So, they have gone from, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but off the top of my head, from about $6,000 a unit to almost $7,000 a unit for a single-family home in the past 10 years. So, they have been going up, have they been going up at the same rate of inflation? That's what our study will determine, whether or not that happens, whether they need to be raised at a greater rate. And then we'll have to talk about, you know, what is the implementation? How do we implement that without impacting the industry as well?
Yes. And just for what I'm saying is, today that building costs 79 million. Next year, that building's going to cost us 95 million, just in labor alone, from going from 850 or 875, wherever minimum wage is, to now $10. And then in three years, it's going to be $15.
Yeah.
So, that's what I'm saying, is we have to be vigilant in how we're budgeting and keeping up with inflation, and making sure that, you know, these plots today are going to be able to suffice, these funds are going to be sufficient enough for the future.
Yeah. One of the things that we do, we do budget based upon, you know, the anticipated building cost, and when we open this school, it'll be in 2025. So, we budget based upon when we think we'll issue the contract. But as one of my business partners used to say, that we're guessing on what a contractor's going to guess that the building's going to cost. So, it is a difficult situation, budgeting far out. And we, again, that's why, as Terrence said earlier, we look at the five-year work plan every year, and then we roll through these numbers and make sure that the budgets are realistic.
Matt, just a follow-up question. I agree with Mr. Inglesol that that figure is going to be much higher. But just for the public out there, and I say this all the time, because it's different from me, we're not a taxing authority. So, when you talk about impact fees, correct me if I'm wrong, those impact fees are still, we can give them a study and ask them what we want, I guess, but those impact fees are set by the state. Am I correct or not?
Actually, we work with the county commission. The impact fees are implemented through a county ordinance.
I mean, through the county, yes, but yeah, but ultimately.
And we actually set the rate. We do the study, and then determine what the rate should be based upon the cost and the revenue. And then, you know, we work with the county commission to get that implemented.
But it's not set by this board. We don't vote on setting the impact fee.
It's, this board would actually make the recommendation to the county commission. But it's really a, you know, it's a consultant's opinion on what the cost and revenues are. And, you know, it's, and it's got to be defendable, because we know that the TCBAs and everybody else is going to be looking over our shoulders. And we're going to play our cards face up and work with them to make sure that we can defend our position, and they agree with it.
Yeah, that's probably the most important thing we can do for money. And because you got everybody looking, the county, the cities want their impact fees, and they can vote on that themselves. Where we're kind of, we can only make a recommendation.
Yeah, we're beholden to the county commission.
Yes, there you go. That's all I wanted to hear.
I just wanted to give some information. So, impact fees does fluctuate. We do know that. We're very conservative when we budget for impact fee revenue. But I just wanted to point out that from 1920 to 2021, impact fee revenue increased by 87%. That's not normal, but, you know, if we can keep that up for the next couple of years, that year or two.
Did you say those numbers were from one year to one year?
1920 to 2021.
They went 87%?
Yes, it increased by 87%.
Any more questions for Ms. Jerga before she sit down? Thank you, Ms. Jerga.
I've got a couple more slides here.
I do have a comment.
Just realize, board members, that these schools are expensive, and when people come and talk to you and say, "Oh, that's a lot of money for this," it's a lot of money to build up for the future. So, board members, when other constitutional officers come and talk to you, this is important. We cannot waver.
I got a second act. The most valuable asset we have, everybody knows that, is the children. So, that's why we're all here. But Troy, it's a lot of money, but what would you rather invest in? It's just that, in that pool for impact fee money, I'll just say it, you know, I don't want to get into the thing, but growth doesn't pay for itself. When they build a new house, that house does not pay for itself. We got to get the money other ways, through sales taxes, or hopefully, we can get our referendum passed in that way. But a typical house with the impact fees in St. Lucie County doesn't pay for itself over so many years. I forget what it is, but they don't.
Oh, I 100% agree, but the rates that you do set, you do have to, when you're budgeting 75% on a certain part, and then the other 25%, you do have to meet that 25% make it up. And we have been here before, and Jack, you were successful in helping us when we had to make temporary schools, because we didn't plan adequately. So, at least now, we're planning adequately, and we're doing the budget right. And I thank Michelle and Marty for looking ahead, and the superintendent's vision of saying, "Hey, we need to get in front of this." So, I mean, board members, this is crucial. This is an important meeting.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
Let me add that we did look beyond 2030. We looked at 2030 to 2045 to say, you know, what do we really need to do, should we have built, you know, a different sized school in Southwest Port St. Lucy? So, we looked at that. And that we believe, again, these are fuzzier numbers, but the further you get out, the fuzzier they get. In 2032, we'll need to add 400 capacity to the K8 school. In 2035, with a new school in Southwest Port St. Lucy. 2042, new K8 in Southwest Port St. Lucy. And then the high schools, we'd add 500 capacity to Westwood in 2036. And then 1,000 capacity to the new Southwest Port St. Lucy High School, DDD. Again, these are long-term estimates, and as Terrence opened up with, we look at these every year, and then we adjust those as well. But, you know, and I'll add, and I'll probably get in trouble, but it is exciting to build new schools, and it's exciting to rebuild Westwood. And we can just look to the past to see what happened when we rebuilt Fort Pierce Central, what a great asset that has been to the community, and the change in the culture, and the programs that people like Dr. Wilde has instituted in the high schools, that really create, you know, a true value in the community.
Mr. Sanders, I too am very thankful that you're, we're looking ahead. I personally live in the St. Lucie West area, and it is insane, the growth that's going on, and the housing market, and as a real estate person myself, absolutely incredible what the houses are causing now, and that there's not enough houses for the people that's moving in. And they are bidding. They're actually a person to put one thing down for their home, and they get more for it now, because there's a bidding going on among people who want that house. So, it's a very high demand, and not enough housing. But that housing is going to be built, and we need to look ahead of things. And also, I wanted to say to, forgive me, Ms. Thomas, I called you Michelle Jerga, but you're Michelle Thomas. Thank you so much for your input, and for both of you being so in-depth in your knowledge to present to us today.
I apologize. Somehow, my slide got lost here, and Terrence reminded me. I wanted to talk about what our next steps on the capacity projects are. One is that we, our next steps would be to, you know, advertise and select design professionals, architect, construction manager, and then select an academic team to work with the facilities team, the project manager, the architect, to determine to program the schools. What is that, what are the programming things that we're going to have in this school? You know, what does the design look like? Do we try to reuse the design, or do we try to start with a new plan? But those are the next steps on, you know, making sure that we build the right school for St. Lucie County and put the right programs on it. And then, we finalize the agreements with the developers to make sure that the roadways are constructed timely before we start working on any detailed plans on those sites. But we do have options on all of the school sites, so I'm not concerned, but I think we've picked the best two to meet the needs right now. Okay? Any other questions?
The plan for the site for the high school, there is Centennial over there as well. Is that very close to Centennial, or how does that go with the location of the schools and the zoning?
You know, the location is, works out really pretty well. If you think about the distances between, while they're close because of the proximity on Crosstown, and it's such an easy route, the time-wise is very close. But, you know, they're still, you know, I would guess, almost eight miles away. So, it's in the right location, without a doubt. If you look at the density of students in the planning areas for North and South, if you look at those areas between the Turnpike and I-95, there's enough students in that area alone to fill two high schools. Again, you see Treasure Coast is, you know, as close to Centennial as the Verona site. So, Treasure Coast, you can see their, I don't know if this pointer works or not, you can see Treasure Coast High School's right here. So, and then Centennial's up here. So, you can see, it's a similar distance between Treasure Coast and Centennial as the new Verona High School. So, it's definitely the, I think, the right location, considering where the students are today and where they will be in the next 10 years.
Can you put your pointer up there for the Verona?
The Verona site is the big circle here, yeah. I'm sorry. So, you know, it's, again, it's, much like this location that we have, the office building here, you know, we've got great access with Crosstown, I-95, and then, oop, I'm sorry, I apologize, I got carried away with my finger. This North-South Road A here is going to go just to the east of the high school, and it will go down all the way to Becker Road. So, again, you know, it's going to be anywhere in this area, depending upon traffic, is a, you know, a five to 10-minute drive to get to that high school. And access from the 34953 zone is through Gatlin, through Becker, you can get to that area as well. So, again, I think between the high schools that we have, and at Treasure Coast and Centennial, we balance that, those locations well.
Dr. Mills, if I could, if you look at that map, and I don't want to, as Marty talked about the Riverland piece, at the end of Becker Road down the bottom there, and Marty can correct me if I'm wrong, right there, he's got the arrow on it, that is really the ideal, in my own opinion, that's the ideal place, because that's where all the buildout is going to be. That's right where the 28,000 homes are going to go and everything. And there is a debacle of who's going to pay for it, but Marty and I both have pretty good inroads into the transportation information and what's going on here. So, but I really think by the time we find out how we're going to pay for this or get this started, that that's going to be...
Yeah.
They have to build it, Dr. Mills. It has, they have so much invested, they're going to have to build it.
I agree totally with that. It has to be built.
Yeah, they're just, who's going to pay for it? And they're going to, it's got to happen. So, hopefully, I'm rooting for that site. But it's got to get done. Marty's right. If the road doesn't go through, we can't build, but it's, I think it will.
And we'll continue to monitor that, you know? Unfortunately, about two-thirds of my day is monitoring what's going on in Port St. Lucie. And we do monitor it closely. We participate. You know, I have actually a 10 o'clock call with Wilson Grove. Every two weeks, the city has a call with a developer on Wilson, on Southern, so that we stay on top of it, make sure that we get what we need. And the city's helping us out quite a bit there. So, we appreciate their assistance.
And the TPO's on top of it, too. So, we're at a meeting, I think, in two weeks, and it's been talked about quite a bit, so...
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Good morning again. So, what we've been talking about is this five-year capital plan. And this is the tool that we use internally to kind of develop our plans for the future, look at what we're doing this year, go out. Our plan internally actually goes out 20 years, but the state, for this purpose, we just focus on the five-year plan, because that's what the state requires. I know that it's really small in front of you, but this is basically our document, and it shows our capital revenues, our capital expenditures, all of the different projects that we have going on at each given year. So, I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the components. So, in 2122, we're basically starting out, or 20, yes, 2122, we're basically starting out with an $80 million fund balance that rolled from last year. So, that's always our basis. That's what we start with when we're thinking about, what can we do this year? We're starting with 80 million. I'm estimating $71 million in additional revenue. Where's that coming from? So, I budgeted $20 million in sales tax revenue. We collected 23 million last year. Just a little conservative, but it's better to be conservative in this case. As I said earlier, we're conservative with impact fees. We collected $28 million in revenue and impact fees last year. I'm only budgeting 5.9 million. We're very, very conservative with the impact fees, because they can fluctuate. So, we just want to be careful with those. We have 41 million in our local capital millage, and that comes from our millage rates that we voted on earlier this month. And then we have some smaller revenue sources, CO and DS, and those are state revenue fuel tax. And that's pretty much what makes up our additional revenues. So, the bottom line is, we're looking at about... So the bottom line is we're looking at about 152 million to spend. That's for this year only, but what we do is we also think about our ending fund balance because that's how we build our basis for planning for the future, planning to, you know, what can we do with these schools and how can we fund these schools in the future? So we don't want to utilize all of that 152 million dollars in revenue in this year. We want to make sure that we're monitoring our ending fund balance. So the next section is really going to just outline some of our expenditures and projects. And the first section, which is probably on the bottom of the first page and the second page in your document, those are special projects that we have throughout the year, things that come up. Maybe we need to do a retrofit for our HVAC system. Maybe we need to replace a roof at a school. Maybe we need to change the, change the flooring or do painting, things like that. So those are special projects that we consult with our facilities department, Brian, Matthew, and John Gillette, and they determine the needs out at the schools and we determine what we can fund in any given year. At the end of that, we have our countywide projects, which are various things that we do at the school. They can involve, you know, small painting jobs, flooring, just things that we, we do to keep up the schools with our remodeling and renovation at schools. And so we budget that for the year and, you know, our facilities and department can manage that the way they need to. In that, we also have our capital transfer to general. We, we do a capital transfer to general to offset insurance and workers' comp and things like that, those liabilities that we have in the general fund, and that is allowed by statute. So what we're looking at, at the bottom line here, is a projected ending fund balance of 75 million from that 152 that will carry over into 22, 22, 23, and so on and so forth, allowing us to project out and plan for future capital projects. Any questions on the five-year plan?
Questions, discussions, comments?
I am going to be calling you so that we can go over this once I digest this. So I, I will have questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
Just looking at some of these, these projections and work orders, I'm going to have to sit down and talk over a few things. I don't want to do it in public, but you know, there might be a day where we, we schedule out a day where board members come in one at a time to discuss. So you guys aren't like coming this week and next week, but I'll just say let's, Monday morning, so such, such time, all board members can come in and schedule in time. So you guys are on the same topic. That way we can clear any issues because I, I think we're all going to have some, some questions and issues that we don't want to be discussing in public, but privately.
Yeah, one-on-one.
One-on-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I prefer that. But, but if we could all like pick a day or something, so we're not taking staff time up too many times.
That would be perfect and then we can make sure that all the parties that need to be there are there to answer any questions.
That's what I figured.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Again, Ms. Thomas, I think we're clear now.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Gillette.
Morning, board members, Mr. Gent. I'm John Gillette. I'm going to be talking a little bit about facilities projects and where we're going over the next few years. For instance, this year was actually quite a challenge for us, not just the ordinary repairs and replacements, but we also had COVID-19. And we wanted to be prepared for the safety of the students and the staff because that's my main job, is to make a safe, secure place for the staff to teach and the students to come learn. So we took extra steps this year to maintain that safe atmosphere for everyone. One of the biggest things that we did is we created a clean air, healthy environment that everybody can come into and feel confident that they're getting a fresh exchange of air. And the filters that we're using are top-rated MIR filters. We changed them on a big schedule. Plus, if we get a report that someplace might be, just might have a, a problem, we go and react instantly. We have been doing this night and day since school is open. Great staff of people working on air filters and things like that. We, we take, we have monitors. For instance, this room has monitors in it that will tell what CO2 levels are inside. CO2s is the exhaust out of your lungs of expelled air. And when those levels get too high, there's a couple of things that happen. One, you get tired and that's not good for students because they'll just go to sleep on you. But the other thing is you're having a, you're showing that you're not having a good flow exchange of outside air and inside air. That's important to keep the atmosphere clean and quality, is to have the proper. If you have too much air, you'll have too much humidity. If you have not enough, you'll have too high of CO2s. So we've, we've got that monitor in every place in the school district. The other thing we're doing is monitoring the temperatures. As you know, these masks create a little bit of a heat zone on your face. So we have lowered the temperatures where necessary to make it comfortable for teaching and students for wearing the mask, so it won't be difficult for them inside. Also this year, we were finished up a project that we started 10 years ago. We were, we were on the forefront of bipolar ionization, starting 10 years ago. What bipolar does is it actually releases a charged atom into the atmosphere, which attracts the viruses, molds, any kind of bad things that could be in the air and it neutralizes them. So it covers them and eliminates them so that the atmosphere is clean. We've been doing that and also using lighting and different kinds of other sources, but we started this 10 years ago and we finished up that project this summer. And it was quite an aggressive move to, to do all that this summer. HVAC, that's the, that's the next most important thing, that's comfort level and productivity and everything else. So we, we put a lot of attention on our HVAC during the summers, especially when we can have the schools alternate and change around. Now this year, we had summer schools. So that made us have a little more imagination about getting things done. Jim Bamington is our, he's a great guy. He's one that heads that department and he's been able to, as you can see, chiller rebuilds at Sammy Gaines, Treasure Coast High School, Alapata Flats, Bay Shore, and Westgate K8. Chillers have about a 10 to 15-year lifespan for air cool. And so what we have found is that to take these and do what we call renewals, which is the same thing as a rebuild, we actually return them back to the spec of, at the end of their lifetime, brand-new spec, so they're running efficiently, saving energy, and they're warranted again for five years. So parts and labor are not on us anymore. So that's been very good and very helpful, both for the environment in the schools, but also for the district staff to go about, to be able to, instead of spending all the time working on those worn-out chillers, going forward and working on things on the inside. Upgrades to HVAC system, we have the condensing pipe in it at Performance Base. That is a piping that runs to chillers to the main water systems. And it's an overhead outside piping that gets rusty. At the time that we did that, if y'all remember back 14 years ago, 15 years ago, we had a bad case of what we called foreign iron. We've replaced the pipes at Pound Point and a few other locations that's rusted from the inside out. So that was one of the things that was, was going on with there. Replacement of the HVAC system in the server room at Port Central, that, that's a room that keeps, that is our second backup server room. So if that room gets hot, the servers get hot and they don't function very well. So we made sure that was done this summer also. Also, we had some underground piping at Alapata Flats, which I'll talk about a bit more later. Carpentry and plumbing, this is the summer work that Vernon Davis heads over. If you notice the picture, that's the floor inside of Moa's kitchen. So we had to take all the equipment out. That kitchen was starting to sag and have problems with the floor. So we had to take it, strip it down, and start all over again and with a better method. So we had that. We had the no trespassing signage, which is part of the security grant that we were allowed to get, and we've been putting those signs up. Office addition at Performance Base, remodel of a kitchen at Moa, as we spoke about. Structural repairs, the columns, metal buildings have a bad problem with when concrete mixes, is done during the steel, where the steel is put in and it's concrete around it, the limes and the concrete cause it to rust. So we had to replace a couple of columns there because they were getting ready to be dangerous. We also refinished all the gym floors. There's, this is purely just a small snapshot. Literally, there was 1,000 more or more work orders done also during this timeframe. So we were quite busy with the carpenters and plumbers. Electrical intercom, this is under Rob Damato, a great, great guy, great customer service guy. Upgrades for there with the sound systems in the Southern Oaks, the security keys and locks at Port St. Lucie High, the intercom systems at Fairlon, River's Edge, Savannah Ridge, the LED lights, which all this is energy. The LED lights are energy-consuming, but they're also labor-consuming takeaways because LED lights last at least three to four times longer than regular light bulbs. So we don't have people sitting up in the gyms and going up and down, getting lamps and changing lamps all the time and ballast with LED lights. So it saves us a lot on labor also. So we've had Treasure Coast, Port St. Lucie, St. Lucie West, and Sammy Gaines done. River's Edge was done. The South County Transportation Compound and the maintenance warehouse shop were all replaced because those lights run pretty much 24/7. Now we'll get to the facilities planning department. And so what we've got going on in future, you'll see some of that in the paperwork that you were handed, was carpet removal and replacement for Dan McCarty, Forest Grove, FK Suite, Longwood, Weatherby, and White City. We're going to start as a strategic way of planning and going by the absolute need most at the schools and taking out most of that carpet and replacing with VCT, which is much more friendly for us to keep up and it's also cleaner environment. Playground replacement. Playgrounds are, are something that we, we do replace and it's, but it's been such a transition in the time that we've started doing it a few, about 10, 15 years ago, most of the companies are either gone out of business that we've bought some playgrounds from, or they have changed designs where we can't get parts for, for them after so many years. So we're, we've come up with a generic plan of giving the principals choices of which lot they want to pick, what color they want to pick, additional equipment if they need it. Because one time, one thing, if y'all remember, probably I do, when I was growing up at Fairlon for school, there was a very large playground area. I mean, there was tractor tires out there, there were swing sets, there was monkey bars, there was all this and it was spread out quite a, quite a distance and kids were able to travel between these spaces, more than one classroom. The newer playgrounds are condensed. They're put into a smaller area, they're safer, obviously, but they're, it makes it a little harder for more students to use. So we're now actively seeking and finding out from the schools and asking them, what could make that more enhancing? What can we add? Swing sets? Can we add some other equipment that would make it larger for the students to be able to diverse themselves around with? So we're using that as a, as a design principle and offering the principals the opportunity to see what they think would work best at their site. Exterior painting, as you can see, we've been doing quite a few schools. We're going to get back on schedule for LPA, Dale Casson, and many other countywide projects. We've been doing some painting, but it's not been a, a large project. We're getting back on that with a plan and a schedule. We also have key system replacement. The patents on the keys that we bought a long time ago have, have gone out. So pretty soon those keys are not going to be able to be duplicated. So we're going to have to go back in and re-key them to a system that's not proprietary, which we have the ability to do now. And that way the key systems will never have to be replaced or, or stop being bought, the keys that we can use. And also we have HVAC replacements of Mariposa, Forest Grove. We also have Dale Casson's air handler system and roof replacement, all in one project. And then CMOR HVAC replacement projects. So those projects are also moving forward in the next few years. This is something that we use on a weekly basis to stay up with everything. As I said about all the work orders, well, there's at least 100 different projects that we monitor at, at every, every week and find out the progress, find out what needs to keep it on, on schedule, on time, on budget. And if I showed you all of them, it'd probably take about eight pages to do all of them that we stay, and we talk about them every week and stay on top of them. Great, great design by Brian and Matt back there to keep us up on what's going on and not let things fall through the cracks. And Matt, I'll open up with questions.
Questions or comment for what?
Got me with, got me with acronyms on that one again. I mean, I got the schools down, Dr. Mills, pretty good, but something like that technically, I don't know if, I would appreciate the, the HVAC and the...
Well, thank you very much. I am very privileged to work with a great staff, a great bunch of future leaders for the school district, and it's been my honor and pleasure to, to be with them. It really makes my life easy.
I can get your number, don't worry.
Okay, Mr. Gillette, before you sit down, we, we want to thank you for your service and your time that you've had here in St. Lucie County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Mills.
The entire length of time that I've been here, never once has anyone complained about your customer service skills and even employees have been very, people that have worked under you have been very pleased with you as their administrator over that department. So we want to really recognize that and thank you and we, if we could keep you, we would. But Superintendent already told me we have to let you go.
No, he can change his mind.
Oh, okay. We talked about that. But you said, no, what he said was he didn't think you would change your mind.
No, no, no. I mean, we can put the pressure on right now.
Dr. Mills knows my activities director and I would have to change her mind and she knows how difficult that could be, so, for my life.
We just want to thank you.
And I appreciate all the good comments.
For those board members that, that did not really know John, he is a jewel here in this district and we are very, we want you to stay.
Yeah.
Superintendent said you can stay.
I've got my same phone number.
You two talk.
Everybody knows how to get ahold of me.
I've heard nothing but, nothing but good things.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate the CO2 explanation because I wonder why, sometimes in the afternoon, why some of the cabinet members appear to be sleepy and it could be related to a lack of CO2 in their offices. So we'll talk about that in cabinet tomorrow. Some of them are in the room right now. But anyway, we're going to recognize John in two weeks at the board meeting. That'll be his final board meeting, but I want to echo the, the comments. I've known John many, many years and he and his, he does a remarkable job, level, low key, got a Sunday preaching suit on right now. He does a lot in the community and I just appreciate his service to the district. Madam Chair, that really concludes our portion of this. This is kind of a historic day because we're unveiling really, you know, we've talked about the, the building of a new high school down south, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we're, you know, one of the priorities for myself as well, and I believe for the board, is to rebuild Westwood and to modernize that school so that those students have the same kind of building that we have in other parts of the county. And that's been something that's been going on. I've heard that for a long, long time when I was here before and back. So I think that we're going to begin this process and it's a win-win for our students all through the county. And, you know, look, excited about that and excited about the future and, and working on these plans and presenting them to the board and to the community and moving forward. But it's a, it's a, it's a historic and important day regarding that. Thank you.
That that's what we're going to do, rebuild Westwood. Is there going to be a vote on it? I mean, how does that work?
I'm sorry, I can't, I didn't understand the question.
Is this something that's etched in stone that we are going to rebuild at Westwood or is there going to be a vote on it? How does this work?
We just present to the board. I saw consensus from the board here, so we're moving forward. We're going to rebuild Westwood. What we have to do is go through a study. We have to go, there's processes that Marty explained in the presentation this morning regarding the Gestalti and working with the Department of Education, whether you can re-remodel it or rebuild it. I hope that we can make the case that we tear it down and, and build a brand-new building.
Well, let's make it clear at this time that there is a consensus from the board that we will move ahead on the project and I for one give you a consent to move ahead.
Madam Chairman, just going to the school recently, I mean, the whole school is, you know, just the courtyard and I mean, we're doing a great job, but I mean, it needs to be redone.
You're talking Westwood?
Talking about Westwood, yeah. I mean, just go to the school. I mean, we've redone the library, we're limping along, we've redone the gym a couple of years ago, 2004, 2005 with the hurricanes. So I mean, that school has been redone and it, it's time to like actually do it for real. You can put a Band-Aid on things for so long.
Mr. Richardson and Mr. Kelly, do you have, do we have your consensus on moving forward?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was asking a question. That's what I was doing.
Yes. Yes.
Because I don't know what the problem is.
It was a very good question.
Okay, so...
In regards to wanting to know, where do we go from here? Where are we? Thank you for that question.
And I also have another question when it comes to, are, is this, are we given, or do we vote on the new schools? I didn't know anything about that K-8 school. I knew about the high school and Westwood, but I didn't know that we were planning to build another K-8. That that wasn't the words.
Yeah. What we've presented here, and then we'll periodically update the board, the K-8 is the last, would be the last, would be, there's three projects. That would be the, the third project. We'd start out with the two high schools, and then that would be a year or two after that.
Okay, so we're looking at finishing Westwood and the other, the one in Tradition, B-Tradition by 2025?
The, whatever the numbers were that are on, it's 25, 26, 27. That's an approximate timeframe. What we can do, Marty kind of summarized at the end, but we can get a paper out to y'all as well with a, with a kind of a, a timeline as to where we are. It's a flexible document because it can change based upon whatever's going on at that time. But we can do that. And then we can follow up and at, at other workshops as well to bring the board up to date on, on progress and where we are with that, with the, with the projects.
Okay, so I, to understand that we are going to, that there is a consensus to build that new high school. Is that what we're doing today? Or is that going to come to, to the board for a vote?
We're going to move forward based upon what I'm hearing from the board here now. And then we can lay out a timeline for that and present that to the board at our next workshop as well. But we want to move forward. We've been sitting around, and I, I don't want to move forward and, and, and get this going. And that's why we brought it to you at this time, and we're ready to roll.
So let me ask it, let's, let me ask it this way. Is there anyone here who would not want to move forward at this time based on the presentation and what we know at this time?
Again, I am just asking, I, I thought that this was just a preliminary, that we were just going to be presented with, with what the plan was.
Yes.
So I was, this was not what I was exact, I just thought they were, at some point, a later point, was going to come to the board for a vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Would you, would you like to see anything other than what you're saying?
No, no. Like I said, this was not what I...
So there's a consensus with everyone. That's the point I wanted to, just so that we can move on with the project.
Madam Chairman, just to reassure Mrs. Richardson, I've always had issues with the five-year plan because it's never been the five-year plan. It's somewhat been the 10-year plan, and then somewhere it's been the next-year plan. It really depends on the state of what is happening with COVID and all this stuff. This could happen within the next two years. You know, at least we're trying to show the community and the superintendent's being vigilant, saying, you know, hey, this is what we're looking for. I said, we've had plans, and Marty knows about the school off of East Torino, that we, we had plans for that school, and then all of a sudden, the, the recession hit, and it, and it stopped just like that. So I pre, you know, this, you are asking some great questions, and just, you have to have a plan, but you never know how that plan's going to go. And like Marty said, some of this is going to be, have to be worked out with the city. And Jack has a favorite, favorite site, and we're just planning. And it just, you know, this is just the way that somehow this government goes. So I mean...
Thank you, Mr. Inglesall, again, because Mr. Kelly has a favorite location, and there is another one that seems still to work. You know, this is why I'm asking, is, you know, what is the procedure, and where are we at this board meeting? Because I want to know where we are right now. Are we going to go through with this? Is this, is this etched in stone? We're going to move forward? Or are we going to, is this going to be up for debate? Now, I understand that, yes, we're going to move forward with this.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just needed to, some clarification, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I can't hear you.
I don't know if I'm on.
Oh, now you are.
Okay, there we go. I'm sure there will be many votes, as we've done, you know, with the other group I was with. We, we'll have to decide on where we're going to put the school. We're going to have design built, who, who is going to build it. And all of those come before us for a vote, recommendations by staff. And it's, there will be many votes on it. But could you bring it up? Because the public doesn't know. So if you don't ask, the public doesn't know. Are they approving it today? So it's good to ask those questions.
Oh, very good. Very good.
We got the consensus though, right?
Yeah, this is our starting point. This is our starting point. And we'll be coming back to the board. There will be votes on certain items. There'll be updates on certain items. But this will be our beginning point and our starting point.
And you'll keep us in close...
Absolutely.
Close, closely in the loop with all, all decisions on that. Okay. Are we all clear? Any comments?
No, we're not clear.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one other question. So with...
Us building or rebuilding Westwood, are there any other schools like Westwood that needs to be rebuilt? I can, I'm thinking of maybe White City. You know, it does, White City needs to be rebuilt. I mean, are there any other schools that we are going to add to that five-year plan? Mr. Gent?
I would, we've talked about Westwood because that's where the priority is. I believe the school was built in 1978. White City is a historical site. There's been a lot, I mean, we can get the information on what's been done the years past, because most of those schools, if not all of them, have been renovated or brought up with, with, just similar to what we did at Cast, at St. Lucie Elementary School. And so the plan right now, and that could be in the five, 10-year plan, I'm sure it's in there somewhere. But right now, the, the three, the two main would be Westwood and, and the new high school. There's continual work that goes on in those other sites. Plus, there's been dollars and work that's gone on over the years, over the last 20, 30 years in those school centers.
And of course, we're looking at our finances and budget as well.
Exactly.
In the whole scheme of things.
All minds and hearts are clear.
Okay. I think I'm losing my hearing. What was that?
I said, all minds and hearts are clear.
Yes. All right, wonderful. So board, we have our board, master board training. Just as a reminder, it will be October the 26th. It is an all-day training from nine to five. So be prepared for that. And does anyone have anything they want to say in that regards before we close?
Are we about to close?
Yeah, about to close, yes.
I just have a conflict on Thursday. We have, I have a Concern Citizens Meeting that's, meets at lunchtime if someone would like to go.
Is that the 26th? Or this Thursday? What are you saying?
No, it's for his meeting this week.
This, this, this Thursday, I have a conflict that I'm supposed to go to a meeting to if someone wants to step in at lunchtime. So just come see me, and I'll tell you where it's at.
Which meeting is that, Trey?
Concern Citizens. It's on the river. It's all the city leaders.
Who is your second on that?
Uh, it might be Ms. Holly. So I was opening it up, just in case.
How long, how long of a meeting is it usually?
It's just for lunch, 12 to 1.
You got me.
Got, got you with lunch. Is that what I heard you say?
I'm on a diet, but I said anyone had to spoon you.
That's not a free lunch.
You got me, Trey.
It's a free lunch, right? Is it a free lunch? Let Jack know it's a free lunch.
There's no free lunches.
Oh, it's a free lunch. Linda Bart's brings it, your buddy.
All minds clear.
Madam Chair, I have just one thing, and it's not a, I'm not asking for a decision or to set any policy. I just need to know what the policy is at, at the last meeting in the meeting, the regular board meetings. We had a lot of people in here with signs, huge signs, posters and things. And I had people complain. That's what they, they asked me after the meeting, what the policy was on bringing these huge signs in. And it's, you know, for some people, they hold them up and they can't see what's going on. And I, and I felt like a dummy because I don't know what our policy is. Are we allowed to bring these huge signs in? I know they're okay outside, but I don't know what the policy is in here. I don't know if we have a policy. I just, I want to ask.
Well, looking, I have to look at it, Mr. Kelly, because we don't want to have anything that's disruptive. I don't know if Mr. Ferguson, if you have anything that pops in right off the top of your head, or we just have to look at it?
Well, I have to look at it.
Okay.
Because I don't like, you know, I don't want anybody stepping on anybody else's rights and things. But when you're holding up something, you are stepping on their, you know, I, I don't know. I'm just asking. That's all. But I felt...
So we'll look, we can look at that.
Thank you for bringing up the subject before we close.
Yeah, just as a member of the board, somebody asks me policy, I don't know. I, I don't feel good.
I know that across the state and across the country, school boards are looking at those kinds of things because of the, the temperature that's there now with some of the issues that are coming forward. And, and so some of them are looking and revising some of their policies on speaking time and, and which doors come in and masking and those kinds of things. So I think we, it's a perfect opportunity to, to do a comprehensive look at that.
The saving of seats as well, because that...
Right, yeah, we shouldn't, yeah, exactly.
It's quite a few things that we need to kind of get a tighter hold on. And I was very disturbed myself that someone would get, put my picture on a poster over and over and over and over and over, and count how many times I touched my face. So we have to have, definitely, I appreciate you bringing up the comment that you just brought up, because we have to make sure during this, the times that we're in right now, that we are making sure that we're protected in our board meetings as people come.
Thanks for listening. I know other school boards have banned them, and the main reason was safety. That's what I read when, when I looked at it. So I just didn't know, so I asked.
I mean, is that, is that the direction, if the board wants to go in a direction like that? I mean, because I can pick up consensus now regarding signs and those kinds of things coming into the room.
Just safety, safety issues when people come in as far as us being a board up here, directing a meeting.
Oh, it's not that. It's just bringing down a sign sometimes. If you get real passionate, you can hit somebody in the eye with this. I just, I would prefer to have Mr. Gent look at it, whether the school boards are doing. But when I investigated, that's what it was. Whether you do it or not, that's, you know...
And I'm saying, go even another step further than what you mentioned. But yes, I think it's a consensus with me, it's a consensus with all of us, that we want to have Mr. Gent look into it a little bit more to make, to ensure what we think would be safe for us as we hold board meetings right now.
Are we saying that no signs, or just the size of the signs?
Madam Chairman, Chairman, I just think this is a subject that I haven't put much thought into, because I know some kids bring in signs sometimes. And I know that, I think the superintendent just needs to go and look at some different situations.
Sure.
And his, his cabinet, and that's not a decision that we need to make at this moment. But it can come back. But, you know, at this time, I just haven't put much thought into, and I'd hate to make a rest decision without, without thoroughly vetting it through my mind.
See what other school boards do.
See what other school boards do.
In regards to the signs, just to be clear, in regards to other protocols that they may have.
Will do.
All right.
You reminded me of that when the kids brought the signs. I had met with the kids a couple of years ago and thought we had it worked out. And then they walked into the meeting with the signs.
Well, I was just thinking, does the kids bring signs, and then some of them bring an R? It's like, you know, where do you draw the line? So I just want to make sure.
Okay, we can continue this discussion after the adjournment, okay? At this time, we adjourn our September 28th School Board Special Work Session Meeting. We adjourn.